It is 6:30 and we have a quorum. We'll call the council workshop to order, please. We have a proclamation and a life savings award and also a nice sponsorship check from Waste Management. You can see item one is a public hearing. Donnie, will you go over what you checked on there and make sure everything's okay?
I guess, because this deals with the home being converted to a church, we did want to make sure that that was not going to impact the sale of alcohol at our events. Steve did check on that and it's 600 feet door to door, which is beyond the 300 feet requirement. So we're good.
Item two is also a public hearing. Nika is going to do a complete presentation on that because council has not seen this yet. So she's going to do a complete rest time, knows any backup, but she's going to go over everything on it. So I'm not going to read all the administrative comments on them. I'm going to let her go over that and all the variance requests. Then after her presentation, we're going to come back in here for a short closed session for consultation with attorney on an issue. Item three is another public hearing.
This is another SUP. You are seeing quite a few of these on your agenda and I will say that I think like everyone is that we've really seen some improvements in the appearance of the project.
Right. Me and Joan, I think this is working really well for what we intended. That we still getting uses, but we're getting the projects that we want.
And they look a lot better.
Right. Okay, item four is a public hearing. Item five is another public hearing.
We have a number of people here from the districts. Jerky is here, a member of others.
Item six. Item seven. Item eight. Item nine. Item 10. Item 11. Twelve. Item 13. Item 14. A note here that unofficially understand Jim Carter has been recommended, but I don't know if council has anyone they would like to amend or not.
Are you opening that for comment?
Yes.
I mean, I looked at all of them and on any given day, any one of them would be a good, I think, a good candidate. Frankly, when I was left, you know, who I would pick first, it was Jim Carter.
Jameson, former county commissioner, correct?
Yes.
Item 15.
So you did have a motion that you approved during the earlier discussion about the budget related to the assignment, but this is on a public agenda now, not that the other one wasn't, but we just had it on both agendas. So we just want you to follow with your same prior motion.
Does this need to be read in the same manner?
Just exactly as it's stated here.
Okay. And then after item 15, we're going to go in, we're going to do reports. We're going to move item 16 to the very end after we do closed session. So after item 15, then we will do reports and those staff that Donna said to go home, can go ahead and go home. Then we will come back in and do our closed session and then we will go back out and do item 16. Questions, comments, any, council? Julie?
Counselor.
This? Donna?
Counselor.
Good, we're adjourned.
Probably cost too much, they broke it.
I hope.
And I can remember things.
Seven o'clock, we do have a quorum. We'll call the city council meeting in order. First item of the agenda is the invocation led by myself and then the pledge of both the American and Texas flags led by Councilman Tierney. Most gracious Almighty God, our Creator and our Redeemer, we thank you so much for the many blessings you give us each and every day of our lives. We thank you for our times of joy and we thank you for our times of sorrow, which help us grow to be better people. We ask a special blessing on those who are ill and those who have lost loved ones and those who are in fear and in hunger and in pain. Let them know that you are always with them, that you are there to sustain them and comfort them. We ask a special blessing on those who put their lives on their line, both here at home and abroad, to fight for truth, peace and justice. We ask your special blessing on us here tonight that we might open our minds and our ears so we might hear everyone's voice and remind them that they do count and hear them and see them through your eyes. We ask all this in your most precious son's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Have a few presentations we'd like to make tonight. We're going to start off by giving our, giving a proclamation. If I could ask Jay Paul Holcomb to please come forward with me at this time, please.
Mr. Holcomb, it's a pleasure to meet you, sir. Thank you for coming and being with us and sharing today. Thank you for sharing your gift and talents. Come right over here and stand beside me if you will.
We have a very special proclamation now because this is kind of a first time for Lewisville and we're very proud of this. We're very proud of Mr. Holcomb being here for us and help us in this presentation and let, I'll give him a few minutes to say a few words after the presentation, after this proclamation and let you tell a little bit about yourself and how you came about doing what you do. All right? Whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans and whereas poetry as an essential art of the arts and humanities affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, the community pride and development. And whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance and the visual arts. And whereas poetry as an art form is publicly accessible as a way to reflect the heritage, values and aspirations of a community. And through a selection process that included two former poet laureates of Texas, Jay Paul Holcomb was chosen to serve as Lewisville's first poet laureate. Now therefore, I Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, along with the members of the city council and our citizens do officially proclaim that Jay Paul Holcomb is Lewisville's poet laureate for two-year term starting this day, proclaimed on the 18th day of August 2014. Now, Mr. Holcomb, let's take a picture and then I'd like you to tell us a little bit about yourself and how you came about this honor. Step up here.
Okay.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I am a good old West Texan. Went to school, went to college in Abilene and that's where I really got enamored with poetry. When I, I'd always enjoyed poetry before, but when I discovered some of the forms and some of the beauty of the poets that had gone before, I was in love. And I have, I have followed poetry ever since. I, for several years, I spent several years in the Air Force and I intended to go to, back to graduate school in English literature. My original major was math and I minored in English. But life happened and the time I got out of the Air Force, we had two children and I, I needed a good, good job and so I went to, I went to do my poetry at night. Luckily, when we moved here, we were close to UNT. They have a wonderful mini-course program and I was referred to at one time as the Jim Rat of the UNT mini-courses. And which, and I, I loved going, I enjoyed the courses and, and did some publishing through those courses and have been, have been devoted to poetry ever since. And, and now I'm retired, so once I retired, I could let poetry be first. And so that's what I've done and I, I am honored to have this position for Lewisville. Look forward to it and thank you very much for so honoring me.
Well, thank you. We look forward to many of your presentations. Next, we're going to ask Joe James to come forward, please.
Did you bring donuts?
There he is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I think Joe has a special presentation. I'll just, this is Joe James. He's with Waste Management and I think he has something special he'd like to present and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Waste Management is very proud to be a partner with the City of Lewisville. We've been there for many years, look forward to it for many more years. And this year, we're especially excited to be a sponsor for this year's Western Days and with that, I'd like to present the city with a check for $50,000 for sponsoring Western Days. Just got that out of the ATM machine.
I think you're supposed to announce who the...
Well, I'm not sure, Joe. Maybe if we look up around the screen, we'll see who's going to be the star of Western Week this year. Do we know? Oh, look at here. Saturday, September 27, DPM Kevin Fowler is the headliner. All right. Thank you, part of it. If it wasn't for our sponsors that we get for Western Week each year, we would not be able to pull off that event. We appreciate Waste Management and all the other sponsors that join in, helping make that a great event every year. Chief, would you come forward with me, please, sir, now and help me with my next presentation, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, city council, city staff and honored guests. Of course, I'm a little bit biased when it comes to law enforcement in Lewisville because all my guys that each and every day just put it on the line for us to keep us safe and keep us protected. And I extend that also to our, our friends over at the fire department. Chief Tittles folks do everything they can to keep us safe each and every day. And on occasion, we're able to recognize folks for stepping above and beyond what the normal call of duty is. So with that, I'd like to recognize tonight a couple of officers. One in particular is not even part of my agency, but somebody who helped contribute to, to success one night with one of my guys. Select Officer Timothy O'Hare to come forward, please. And Department of Public Safety Corporal Di Norn. As they're making their way up here, you know, one of the things that I remark as I travel around the country that in the North Texas area, all of our law enforcement agencies contribute with each other's successes. There are no egos. We check those at the door and we all work together to, for the common good and never more aptly demonstrated than in this incident that I want to read about. So gentlemen, let me read this citation. On April 24, 2014, Lewisville Dispatch received a call from a suicidal person and plotted to call where the 121 tollway intersects with I-35E. The tollway authority was also notified and dispatched two straight, two state troopers. Upon arrival, Lewisville Police Officer Timothy O'Hare contacted a male sitting on a cross member between two bridges with his leg over the railing and asked him his name. This individual kept shifting his weight, giving officers the belief that he would jump. Officer O'Hare continued to engage the man while DPS Corporal Di Norn approached the man from behind and shoved him at Officer O'Hare. Officer O'Hare quickly grabbed him in a bear hug and pulled the man to safety. The police department's awards committee meant to review this incident and recommended Officer Timothy O'Hare and DPS Corporal Di Norn receive the life-saving award. If not for their quick response and immediate actions, this individual would have most likely jumped to his death and possibly even hurt or killed others below. So on behalf of the City of Lewisville and the Lewisville Police Department, it is a great pride that I present you both with a life-saving award. So before I get them off the staff, I'll put them on the spot here. You know, we know that the support of our families at home is, is huge and us being with you, our job each and every day. So I'd like you guys to take a little bit of time to introduce us to your family and guests.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd like to also definitely thank my family and my friends and all my fellow officers that I work with. My wife, Lindsay, my parents, Bill and Joanne O'Hare and, bruh, there's too many to name. It's just incredible. Thing is, somebody just told me in the lobby, you know, law enforcement is a profession where most of us tend to avoid the limelight. We like to just do our job and that's what we're here for. But it just, it's definitely humbling to see everybody's response and to be here today. Thanks very much.
We did want to thank all his fellow team members, all of them, all for coming tonight, supporting them in the ventures because as Chief says, without them, without you, they cannot do their job. Thank you for their support and for your help in their life. Thank you very much.
I'm going to kill this bug. Next item is a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance from specific use daycare and Old Town mixed-use two to Old Town mixed-use two on 0.879 acres located at 150 West College Street and 145 West Walter Street. Further identified as Old Town Lewisville Edition, Lot 3, Lot 5 and Lot 3 North, 200 feet of east, 103 feet, Block E, as requested by Liberty Baptist Church, the property owner. The 0.879 acre site is made up of two properties, one of which is a former daycare and the other a residence. Churches are allowed in both zoning districts. However, the College Street property is zoned specific use for a daycare. The zone change request is consistent with the Old Town Master Plan, which proposes this parcel be zoned Old Town mixed-use two. The rezoning is necessary to remove the daycare limitation and allow the church to use the property. It would also allow greater flexibility with setbacks. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by vote 7-0 at their August 5, 2014 meeting. I did have a card filled out here by Mr. Ben Franson and he is only here, he does not wish to speak, but he is here to answer any questions that council might have of him. Councilman Ferguson, no other comments, you'll close?
Hearing.
And most of my Councilman Ferguson, closed public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any may have any questions of Mr. Ben Franson? Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the ordinance is presented.
Have motion to approve the ordinance as presented by Councilman Ferguson.
Okay.
Second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning the .879 acre tract of land approximately located at the northeast quadrant of Walter Street and Charles Street. From specific use in Old Town mixed-use two to Old Town mixed-use two district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit request for a warehouse distribution facility with an auto repair shop and a gasoline service station on 52 acres zoned light industrial located at the northwest corner of Bennett Lane and Railroad Street and consideration of five variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-181D2 exterior finish requirement, Section 6-103D6A commercial driveway guidelines, Section 6-103E access management auxiliary lanes, Section 6-121K general provisions related to tree mitigation and Section 6-92B paving streets as requested by Hillwood Enterprises LP on behalf of the property owner, UST Waters Ridge North LP. I do have one card here filled out by Mr. Bill Dolstrom. He is going to want to speak, but at, first, we're going to have our presentation by Nika. So if you let Nika do our presentation first, then we can let you speak.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oops, sorry about that. Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Hope everybody can hear me? Okay. Thank you for the brief presentation and summary in the, in your packet. Tonight, we are asking the council to consider a specific use permit for this project as well as five variances to the Lewisville Land Development Code. I am going to place the aerial for the, for the project so that would give a good indication of where the project is located. Primarily, we are looking at 91 acres piece of property on the north side of Bennett and on the west side of Railroad Street. So this property is just south of the DCTA maintenance facility. Hillwood has owned this property for at least the past eight years that I'm aware of or Hillwood is in control of the development. They are the developer for this piece of property. They have looked at various developments potential on the property. The property is just north of Waters Ridge Industrial Park. So we have always looked at this as an extension of Waters Ridge for a distribution facility and industrial development. Actually, for a while, we've been calling it Waters Ridge North. So Hillwood has been working to bring a facility that's, that's compatible with Waters Ridge development. For the past year, they have been working with FedEx, who is planning, that's planning to, to construct a distribution ground freight facility on this, on this property. And again, for the past six months, we've been working on various development issues related to this site. And I want to just go through very briefly all the variances that are associated with this development because it's a very unique site. As you can see from, from the aerial, that is actually a very secluded site due to a lot of open space and drainage area around it. So much of the site is actually not visible from, from the roads. From Bennett Road, they have a very small frontage. The road that's going to connect to Bennett Road is right across from the Waters Ridge development. So basically, that's the street that runs through the Waters Ridge. And then the rest of the development is primarily within the larger area away from, from Bennett Lane to the north. Out of the 91 acres that is controlled by Hillwood, FedEx facility will be located on 52 acres of the 91 acres. So the specific use permit will be for the 52 acres of FedEx facility. Now, the reason that FedEx is requiring, is required to have a specific use permit is because, again, this is a unique facility in terms of difference to other distribution facilities and they are having a gas station. That's a private gas station only utilized for their own trucks, trucks on the site. And they are having a repair shop in association with their distribution facility. Most of our distribution facilities don't have those two uses. They don't, then that's the reason they don't fall under this specific use permit as distribution facilities are allowed in the light industrial zoning district by right. So one of the reasons that this pushes, pushes this use into the SUP process is because of those two uses. So in terms of the SUP, we feel like the use is compatible with the adjacent properties. They have taken care to, to provide a fairly nice office facility. I will, I think the elevations are part of your, your project, but we'll go through that as we go through the variances because I think the variances for our land development code are more pertinent to the site than the actual SUP permit, which is compatible with the, with the rest of the properties in the area. So the site will have a 90,000 square foot service center. That's their primary distribution facility or freight facility. They will have a 14,000 square foot office facility. There is a break room and dispatch pod that's associated with the service center of about 3,600 square feet. Their auto repair shop is 22,000 square feet and their gasoline service station is 3,000 square feet. The variances, and I like to go one by one, if you have any questions, as, as I'm going through the variances, please feel free to ask. Of course, Mr. Dolstrom is here to also answer any questions. The first variance is to allow a reduction of 80% masonry requirement for the, much of the facility. The reduction for the main, the larger building, the, the freight facility is reduced to 52% instead of 80%. The service center is about 42% masonry, and then they have a small guardhouse at front that's not going to have any masonry on it, it's basically a metal building. Again, one of the primary reasons for this variance request is the distribution facility is primarily dock doors. Basically, that's all you have on the distribution, a large, long area of, of doors that are primarily open on one side, and then freight comes in from one side and goes out the other side. The office building, which is 14,000 square feet and shows up at the bottom of your, the screen right now, is all masonry material. So the office building that will be fronting on the facility will be 100% masonry. The repair shop will have some masonry on the sides of it, but again, primarily it's going to be of a metal building, so 42% of that building is, is metal. And then the gatehouse is 100% metal. None of these buildings are visible from any of the streets due to the large vegetation around the site. So we feel like the site is very unique in terms of its location, and the variance request seems to be reasonable. The second variance is, is to allow a larger driveway, mainly because there is a lot of truck traffic, and having a larger driveway and a larger radii, basically for turning movements for the trucks, is something that this facility needs. Staff has looked at a traffic study, and we concluded through the traffic study that one, there is a need for a larger driveway and radii, and two, that it's not going to impact Bennett Lane in any way, so staff is in support of that. However, due to the large area of pavement mitigation, we have, the condition of the, of the large pavement is to have a large area of landscaping adjacent to the driveway to mitigate the large area of paving. So Hillwood will be placing a, a nice landscaped area right on Bennett Lane that would designate the site in terms of signage and coming into the facility and provide a very nice entrance into the facility. The minimum requirement for that area is 5,000 square feet, so they'll have a 5,000 square foot of landscaped area at Bennett Lane. The next variance is to waive a deceleration lane along Bennett Lane. Again, due to that traffic study that we reviewed, and the traffic on Bennett Lane, and the location of the site, and the not having enough, enough room within their property to provide that decel lane is because the, the road is primarily at the edge of their property. Change my drawings. So decel lane would have had to be beyond the driveway right here, and there's no room to provide a decel lane, and in addition, there's no need for a decel lane with the traffic study that we have reviewed. So at this point, staff does not have any objection to not having a decel lane at that location. The next variance request, which is truly, makes this project a compatible with our 2025 vision, and a win-win proposal both for the city and for FedEx and Hillwood, is a large area of undisturbed natural habitat that will be preserved by this project. So as I mentioned in the beginning, there are 91 acres, and 52 acres will be utilized for the FedEx development. There will be 39 acres of undisturbed natural habitat that will be dedicated to the City of Louisville for the purpose of trail development and, and preserving its natural open space. I'm sure the council remembers our 2025 vision, and a big part of it is, is creating that green and extending that green. This is a large part of extending that green. So a lot of negotiations has been, has been foregoing with, with, with Hillwood in order to keep this property as green and undisturbed in lieu of a mitigation, tree mitigation that Hillwood is required to pay. So had they been developing the sites and paying the tree mitigation fee, there's a $509,000 in tree mitigation fee that the developer had to pay. So in lieu of that, they're, they are dedicating the 39 acres to the City of Louisville, in addition, paying $100,000 to the City of Louisville for future development of a trail in that area. There are quite a few conditions on the dedication that has been reviewed both by our attorney and their attorneys, and we'll be developing further details on that as we go through the site planning process. But the primary, primary requirements have been agreed upon. The last variance is to waive the escrow requirements on Yates Street. This site has frontage on Yates on the west side, and of course Bennett Road on the, on the south. Their primary entrance will be from Bennett. They are providing an emergency access on Yates, primarily for our emergency personnel, but they will not be using the Yates Street entrance for ongoing traffic. Thus, they're asking to waive the escrow requirements for Yates Street as required by our ordinances. Either you, either the developer is responsible for constructing this street or paying, paying an escrow fee in lieu of street construction. However, since they are having a very large impact on Bennett in terms of truck traffic, they have agreed to pay $75,000, $75,400 to go as a fee, not an escrow, but as a fee to, for maintenance of Bennett Lane in the future, just in case truck traffic has any impact on Bennett Lane. So we, we feel like that, that's a pretty good deal for the city at this point. In conclusion, they are, the use is, is compatible with the uses in the area. We have worked through the variances, and both Hillwood and staff are in agreement with these variances. And again, they are here to answer any, any additional questions, if you have any questions, or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor, any, you have any questions of Nika at this time?
Just a comment, I, I, this is incredibly good. It's fantastic. That's my view. I was just very excited when I saw this.
Appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Nika, I know you mentioned Bennett Lane. Is there any anticipation of traffic or impacts on Railroad Street?
The traffic, and I would have to defer to David and Jeff are here. When they reviewed the traffic impact statement, primarily there were no impact on either Railroad or Bennett Lane.
Okay, great, thank you.
No significant impact, let's put it that way.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Nika.
Sure.
Now, Mr. Dolstrom, if you want to come forward, sir, and then give your, just name and address for record, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm Bill Dolstrom, 901 Main Street. It's a privilege to be here tonight again. I really don't have much to add. With me tonight, Dan Tatch, Todd Finley of Hillwood, Craig Jacobson, our architect, Jeff Roberts, our engineer. We're all here to answer any questions you may have. I'd like to also emphasize a few things. Nika did a great job, the staff did a great job working with us through these processes. It is a unique site, there's a significant amount of open space. It's really not visible, and just for point of clarification, the service buildings back here are maintenance facilities here, are certain fuel stations here, so it's, you know, a significant way back into the site to get to those facilities. So we thought this made sense, we think the open space makes sense. Again, we'd like to thank the city for work with us. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Does counsel have any questions, Mr. Dolstrom?
Thank you.
Counselman Durham, I want to take your motion to close. Oh, wait, yes, yes, close the public hearing. So move? Have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to convene into a closed session for consultation with attorney. Back into regular session, counsel. Councilman Durham, any action there?
Movement group as presented.
Second.
By Councilman Durham to pursue, approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
Here, just to be clear, that motion includes the ordinance and the variances, correct?
Yes.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for a warehouse distribution facility with an auto repair shop and gasoline service station limited for private use on 52 acres located at the northwest corner of Bennett Lane and Railroad Street, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dan Tatch, I'm with Hillwood. This is a project I've been working on for, low, all these, all these many years that Nika says we've owned the property. And I just want to thank you all for, for the approval you've given us tonight to move forward. It's an important project for us, and it's, it's been, it's been a long process working with the staff, they've been great to work with. This negotiation has taken twists and turns that I don't think any of us could have predicted, and we're, we're very pleased with the results, we hope the city is, and we look forward to getting started on the FedEx project and, and bringing a marquee corporate name to the city. So thank you all again.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to come back with that same kind of thing anytime.
I'm sorry, say again, you're, you're welcome to come back with that same kind of thing anytime. Okay? It's a deal.
Having a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit request for an auto repair shop on 1.497 acres, zoned light industrial, located at 1115 East State Highway 121 Business, further identified as Mako Addition, Lot One, Block A, in consideration of two variances to the Louisville City Code, Section 6-103C2 access spacing and Section 6-103E4 auxiliary lanes as requested by Homeyer Engineering on behalf of the property owner. Lucky's Collision Center has occupied this building for almost a decade. The applicant is proposing a new 4,945 square foot office warehouse building to be constructed of brick and stone, located behind the existing 8,110 square foot building housing to the, housing to the existing auto repair shop. The auto repair shop's exterior finished materials will be updated to match the new building. The underlying zoning allows for the purpose proposed use subject to approval of the special use permit. The applicant has prepared a development plan with two requested variances. A, to allow a driveway separation of 35 feet between existing driveways in lieu of the required 230 feet spacing, thus allowing the existing driveway to remain on its current location, and B, to allow the existing driveway with a 27-foot entry radius to remain in place in lieu of the required 40-foot entry radius. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of five-zero at their meeting on July 15, 2014. Recognition is that council approved the ordinance as set, and variances as set forth in the above caption. I did have a card here filled out by Mr. Steve Homeyer. Will you want to speak or just answer questions?
Answer questions.
Okay, he's here to answer any questions, if anyone might have any. Counselor, any questions, Mr. Homeyer? Councilman Tierney, close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Have a, have a motion to approve by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for an auto repair shop located on Lot One, Block A of the Mako Addition, containing approximately 1.497 acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is a public hearing, consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2014, 2015, crime control and prevention and, fire control prevention and emergency medical services district budgets. In accordance with state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposed fiscal year 2014, 15, crime control and prevention and fire control prevention and emergency medical district budgets. In addition, state law requires a governing body to adopt the crime control and prevention and fire control prevention and emergency medical systems district budgets 30 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Recognition is council conduct the public hearing and adopt the crime control prevention and fire control prevention and emergency medical services district budgets. I did not have anyone to speak. Councilman Gilmore, close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Gilmore?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as written? Second. Second by Councilman Durham, counselor?
There's no ordinance.
Oh, there's no reading on this? I'm sorry.
An adoption of the budget.
I beg your pardon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is a public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Cas, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District, PID number six. At the August 4, 2014 meeting, the City Council called for a public hearing to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. I do not have any cards filled out on this item. Councilman Ferguson, close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
A second by Councilman Tierney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did not have any speaker cards filled out for anyone to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items in the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone ask for anything to be pulled. Councilman Durham?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is a regular hearing, consideration of a preliminary plat of Verona Addition containing 138 residential lots and eight common area lots located on 30.1 acres, zoned estate townhouse with an associated variance to the Louisville City Code, Section 6-92K, alleys waiving the rear entry requirement for single-family residential located near the northwest corner of McGee Lane and FM 407 as requested by John Holcomb, P.E. of Kimbley Horn and Associates, representing the property owner. This property was rezoned from light industrial to estate townhouse by City Council July 7, 2014, with intent to build 138 single-family detached residential units. The lots and homes will conform to the requirements for detached product in the estate townhome zoning, with the exception of one variance to waive the alley requirement, thus providing front entry lots. The developer will upgrade the typical metal garage doors to be wooden veneer garage doors. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat and the variance at their August 5, 2014 meeting with a seven-zero vote. Recognition, council approved the preliminary plat and associated variance with the condition of wood veneer garage doors as set forth in the- garage doors as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I have nothing, and if nobody else does, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented with the stipulation of the wood veneer garage doors.
Correct.
And a second by Councilman Gilmore, with it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number nine, consideration of ordinance approving the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six. City Council approved a resolution, March 6, 2013, authorizing the creation of Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six. The City Council conducted a public hearing to hear comments on the Service and Assessment Plan and Role earlier during today's meeting. Based on information provided at the public hearing, the City Council must now consider adoption of the plan. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the assessment role. I have two cards here filled out. One is Ross Martin and Kelly Hart, and one is Drew Keith. I believe they're both here. Neither one wants to speak, but they are all here to answer any questions that we might have on, actually, on items nine, 10, 11, and 12. Counselors, have any questions? Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City of Louisville, accepting and approving a Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for authorized improvements for the Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the ETJ of the city, levying special assessments against certain property within the ETJ of the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code, as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is consideration of an ordinance approving a joint utility contract between the City of Louisville, Texas, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1A and Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1H, the joint utility contract, and approving a joint road contract between the City of Louisville, Texas, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1-A and Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1-H, the joint road, excuse me, joint road contract, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1-A and 1-H have requested the approval of the joint utility and road contracts, which are the documents that bind the water district to collect and remit an ad valorem tax to the city for payment of debt service on bonds being considered by council at this meeting. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Once again, I do have those people here to speak, I mean, to answer any questions, if anybody has any. Any questions? Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, approving a joint utility contract between the City of Louisville, Texas, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1A and Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1H, and approving a joint road contract between the City of Louisville, Texas, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1A and Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1H, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,200,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment road system bonds, Series 2014 Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six project, the Series 2014 road bonds, in accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1H has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $1,200,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring and constructing certain roads and streets and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of these bonds. Recommendation to council is to consider the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Same people are here, once again, to answer any questions that you might have. Any questions, council? Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve as presented.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Counselor?
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,200,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment road system bonds, Series 2014, in accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the trust, of the trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond placement agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bonds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $7,310,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment utility system bonds, Series 2014 Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six project, the Series 2014 utility bonds, in accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond placement agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds. Denton County Freshwater District Number 1H has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $7,310,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring certain water, sewer, and drainage facilities, and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of these bonds. Recommendation is council consider the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented, second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $7,310,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment utility system bonds, Series 2014, in accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and the first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond placement agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 13 is consideration of ordinance granting CoServe Gas Limited, DBA, CoServe Gas, a Texas Limited Partnership, as successor and assigns a franchise to furnish and supply gas to the general public in the City of Louisville, Denton, and Dallas Counties, Texas, for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of gas in, out of, and through said city for all purposes. CoServe Gas requested a franchise agreement to continue operations, supply of natural gas in the City of Louisville. The long, the term of the new agreement is through December 31, 2019, with an automatic renewal for two additional period of five years, with franchise fee, street rental fee of 5% of gross receipts per charter. The second reading of the ordinance will be conducted at the City Council meeting on October 6, 2014, with the effective date of the ordinance being on or before December 5, 2014. Recommendation is that City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as written.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Mayor? I'm sorry, that's my fault. She needs to read it.
Oh, okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting to CoServe Gas Limited doing business as CoServe Gas, a franchise to furnish and supply gas to the general public in the City of Louisville, Denton, and Dallas Counties, Texas, for the transporting, delivery, sale, and distribution of gas in and out of and through said municipality for all purposes, providing for the payment of a fee or charge for the use of the streets, alleys, and public ways, providing a severability clause, a penalty clause, and an effective date.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is consideration of a resolution appointing one member of the board, to board of managers of the Denton, excuse me, of the Dinco Area 911 District. At the June 16, 2014, City Council received notification that Harlan Jefferson was no longer interested in serving as the area representative for Dinco Area 911 District's Board of Directors. Due to already having a City of Louisville employee serving as a representative, who's our Assistant Fire Chief, Terry McGrath, to this board, the determination was made to allow the smaller cities to nominate their candidates of choice, and then for the City Council to vote on the submitted nomination. There are currently four candidates for this position: Jim Carter, Drew Corn, Tom Newell, and Connie White. The Dinco Area 911 District has requested that each participating city vote for one of the candidates and advise the district of its election prior to 5:00 p.m. on September 15, 2014. The bios, resumes of each nominee have been attached for the council's review. Recommendation, council approve a resolution adopting one member to the Board of Managers of the Dinco Area 911 District. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to, that we resolve to appoint Jim Carter to the position on 911 Dinco.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to appoint Jim Carter, second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is consideration of upcoming public hearing dates for the city's budget process. The currently approved first public, the currently approved first public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budget and tax rate is scheduled for August 25. However, due to rescheduling the completion of the budget workshop to August 18, which was earlier today, the date of the public hearing will need to be moved to September 2 at 8:00 a.m. to comply with all publishing dates. Recommendation, council schedule 8:00 a.m. September 2 as the first public hearing on fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and tax rate. Councilman Durham?
I'm reading something right here, just a second. Mayor, I make a motion to hold the first public hearing on the tax rate and budget on September 2, 2014, at 8:00 a.m., and hold the second public hearing on the tax rate and budget at the September 8, 2014, City Council meeting at 7:00 p.m., and add a proposal to the September 15, 2014, City Council meeting to adopt .436086 cents as the 2014-15 tax rate.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to move item 16 until after we have our closed session. So with that, now we'll move down to reports. Nika. Nika, I do want to thank you very much for working on this program with FedEx. I know it's been over a year you're working with it, and we appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put together on it. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Bob? I understand you were out there walking the future trail going through there, and you came out alive, no snake bites, few trigger bites, but other than that, you're okay. Good. Chief?
Hello, sir.
Tell my Linda we miss her, but chief, it's good to see you.
Thank you, mayor. This is kind of hard to believe that summer's coming to a close. This time next week, all our kids will be back in school. So we just want to remind everybody that's watching at home to be mindful of the school zones, pay attention to the yellow lights before you see the red and blue.
Like that. That's good, chief. And we want to, again, congratulate you on your 75th year anniversary that y'all held last Saturday, and tell you, I've heard a lot of good comments about it, and how appreciative the people here in the city were of that. We thank you all for doing that. Carol?
No, sir. Just, I am pleased to announce that we actually have put two feet of water in the lake, so I think we're on the downhill side of this summer, so.
Awesome. We appreciate it. And thank you very much, too, your staff, for all the work they're doing on the streets and sidewalks and things throughout the city. I get comments all the time, and I appreciate that, and tell them we certainly appreciate their work. Tina? Brenda? Mr. Ferris?
Just, mayor, a couple of things. I just want to let you know and reconfirm that the city did have its first positive West Nile mosquito trap sample that was verified by Texas Department of Health. by Texas Department of Health. As you know, through the season, through spring, through summer, we've been trapping numerous locations, watching out for that, and this is our first positive. So through protocol, we will be spraying in the Rachel's Court Street area, Renaissance Village. Did I lose my mic?
You're bad.
Rachel's Court area was where this trap was found. That's close to Renaissance Village, so a half-mile radius was notified on Sunday through our call-out program. So spraying will begin tonight at 10. We will do another ground spray tomorrow at 10:00 p.m. About that. Also, some good news. Empty the shelter event last Saturday. Thanks to you guys for waiving the fees associated with that. We were just enamored with people and a great success. We had 69 adoptable animals. In the first hour, we did 25 adoptions. In total, we did 62. Breaking it down, we had 38 dogs, 24 cats, all to good homes, and we had every animal adopted but seven. We had them in line out in front of our center. I think 565 people attended all day. Thanks to our staff who worked long hours. Thanks to our volunteers. We had seven or eight volunteers that worked the entire day. Thanks to our customers that came up and adopted the animals, but again, thanks to you all for making it happen. This event happened all over the Metroplex, all over the state, a lot of radio stations, TV coverage. It's all on Facebook, so a huge success. We'll do it again. Thank you.
That is awesome. And thank you to everyone that did have to work that, because I know it was a very exciting time, but yes, it was a very trying time to get everybody in and out there that day. So we appreciate everybody that worked on that.
Eric, do you know if other cities had equal success as we did?
Yes, sir, they did. Irving had just huge turnouts where they actually, I believe, ran out of animals. Collin County had, I believe, 150, 160 animals adopted out, and for the most part, what we're hearing, we're going to get a report and get to you all as, and we'll put this out on the, maybe the city newsletter or something. I think the theme around the Metroplex was that most of the shelters ran out of product, which that's a good thing. So yes, sir. Huge success.
Great news.
Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight, Councilman Tierney.
Thank you.
Hope you get better soon, sir. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I just want to let people know that I know Labor Day is coming up, but one of my favorite things on Labor Day is the Labor Day rodeo, and this year is the 50th anniversary. It's going to be August 29 through the 31st, begins at 8:00 p.m. in that beautiful rodeo arena with the new seating that we put in there a couple of years ago. So if you get a chance, come on out and see some phenomenal athletes as well as cowboys and cowgirls.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Perry?
No, sir.
Glad to have you back. Glad you were able to make it.
I'm glad to be back.
I know you are. Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. We got a few things. First of all, MCL Grand, we have a stage show, God of Carnage, September 12 through the 14th, three shows presented by our productions theater company. The Visual Arts League continues to have Acoustic Friday Jam, so you want to go hear some free, good music. I've been. I can tell you it's pretty amazing what some of these people can do, and some of them write their own music. They're a very talented group. Art exhibits, we have Fresh Ideas continuing in the MCL Grand Gallery, and the gallery's always open Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00, 5:00 p.m., but also during any public performances. And in the hallway, photography exhibit opens on August 16, so I guess it's open, Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and also public performances. I want to congratulate J. Paul Holcomb as our new poet laureate. I think that's a pretty unique thing for a city to do. Don't see very many cities adopting their own poet laureate, and I think it's a statement of Lewisville and how we appreciate the arts and how we think outside the box. Got one other thing. The Best of Denton County Magazine is currently running its annual voting for various categories, and so I want to bring up a few of them and encourage every single person here to go out to their website and vote for the following: best event facility, MCL Grand Theater; friendliest staffed, by the way, they had to make the top three to get in for the final vote here; friendliest staff, MCL Grand Theater; place for live music, MCL Grand Theater; but not to be totally outdone, Skate Park, Cyan Skate Park at Railroad Park, and the Water Park at Sun Valley. So you can vote on all of those and make Lewisville a bigger, better-known place on the planet. And that's it.
And they're already in the top three, and this is to get them to number one?
This is to get them to number one. So go vote.
Councilman? Julie? Officer, once again, we do appreciate your work every day. Appreciate you being here tonight, sir. And I just want to, on behalf of my wife and I and our entire family, want to say thank you so much to everyone, all the cards, the phone calls, the prayers, especially the prayers, and flowers and letters and everything of my wife's dad's passing, and we thank you all so much for your support. It's been a wonderful feeling to know that you have that many friends and that many people that are there to support you. So thank you all for that. And with that, and in accordance to Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition, Section 551.074, animal staff review, city annual staff, animal. I guess they are sometimes animals. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Don't get mad.
Are they adoptable?
Yeah, are they adoptable, right. Annual staff reviews of city manager Donna Behren, city secretary Julie Hindsey, city attorney Elizabeth Plaster, chief municipal court judge Brian Holman, alternate municipal court judges, and Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will now convene into closed session. Thank you. We'll convene back into regular session, council. We're going to move right to item 16. Item 16 is consideration of a resolution setting two public hearings under Section 43.063 of the Texas Local Government Code for the annexation of an area adjacent to the Lewisville, to the city of Lewisville, Texas, authorizing the issuance of notice by city staff regarding the two public hearings and directing city staff to prepare a service plan. On July 21, 2014, Liberty Bankers Life Insurance Company and Graham Mortgage Corporation, owners of approximately 156.097 acres within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city as described in Exhibit D to the proposed resolution, the property filed with the city secretary, a petition requesting the property be annexed by the city of Lewisville. The city is authorized by law to annex the property but must hold two public hearings regarding annexation prior thereto. Notice for these public hearings must be published in a newspaper for general circulation in the city and the area proposed for annexation before the 10th day, before the date of the public hearings. Notice must also be posted on the city's internet website before the 10th day before the date of the hearings and must remain posted until the date of the hearing. Staff recommends that both public hearings be held consecutively on September 8, 2014 at 7:00 p.m. during the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Recommendation is that city council adopt the proposed resolution and authorize city staff to issue the required notices and prepare a service plan. I do have a speaker card filled out here by Proba Sinclair. I'm sorry, I hope I pronounced that correctly, ma'am. Good, thank you. And she does not wish to speak, but she is here to answer any questions. Is that correct? Okay. Did council have any questions of Ms. Sinclair? Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to adopt the resolution and authorize the required notices and prepare a service plan.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Was there any other council from close, any other action council from closed session? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Gilmore?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.